Call the Germantown School District Board of Education meeting to order at 7:01 PM. The Performing Arts Center at the high school. Item one, official, I'm sorry, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one A, official meeting notification, Dr. Reuter.
Public notice of all meetings has been given by communication from the superintendent's office to the public to those news media who have requested such notices and the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now, Express News, and West Bend Daily News, public notice has also been posted in schools throughout the district and on the Germantown School District website.
Item B, roll call.
Ewer.
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Barney's here. Loth?
Here.
Pollock?
Here.
Higginbotham.
Boyer?
Here.
Item two, approval of agenda.
Motion approved, the agenda?
Second.
Mr. Barney with the motion. Give it to Ms. Higginbotham, sorry, she was quick. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda passes. Item three, reports, district manager straighter update, Dr. Reuter.
Thank you, Mr. Ewer. As we, I think we haven't been together since GHS homecoming took place. We had a great festivities here with the pep assembly as well as a powder puff game and a very successful dance. I shared with the board the data points of how many students attended, number of sales of tickets, and no instances of anything inappropriate happened at homecoming. So, Mr. Smith shared with me, it was a very, and Ms. Nerdall, it was a very successful week and a lot of school spirit throughout the building. Fall sports playoff season has begun. Tonight, we have the boys soccer team is actually playing here at Germantown. Football plays this Friday, hosts a home game in the first round, and we are hosting also Friday night, a Blue sectionals for boys volleyball and swim this coming weekend. So, a lot going on on our facilities as the fall sports playoff season begins. In the month of January, our new communications manager, Mr. Justin Marion, will be coming to the board to share an update on some of the work that's transpired in his first few months here in the district. I want to make everyone aware, not only here tonight but out there, that work will be happening on our website over the next month as we do a full audit of it to make it more intuitive, user-friendly, brand-oriented, and accessible for what that website needs to be accessible for, for information to the public and our staff. So, there might be some under construction or other things like that, but we're working through that behind the scenes and Mr. Marion will give a full report on not only that, but some other work that'll be going on in the district from the communications lens. And then I just remind everyone that next Tuesday, the 28th, here at the PAC is our annual meeting and budget hearing. The budgeting hearing will start at 6:00 PM and the annual meeting will take place at 6:30. And that annual meeting is a meeting for the electorate. All community members are welcome to attend and have a voting statement or voting say in the resolutions brought forward. We ask that you please bring identification as we'll have you sign in and receive ballots that evening. And that's what I have this evening.
Thank you. To B, student representative report.
Hello all, my name is Arush Chopra. I am the student board treasurer here at Germantown and tonight I'm going to be presenting the student representative report. So, as Dr. Reuter said, Germantown High School homecoming festivities wrapped up just a few weeks ago. The entire week was a tremendous success, thanks in large part to the planning and organization of Diane Sarimer, the volunteering of so many GHS stuff, and engagement from so many of our student leaders. Senior girls won powder puff that week and nearly a thousand students attended the dance. Our cafeteria has been serving lettuce grown in our very own hydroponics room. The room has been growing lettuce and micro greens for weeks now and has recently started tomatoes, cucumbers, basil, chives, and so much more. There has been an abundance of food produced that will start to be spread to other schools within the district for all students to enjoy. GHS is the proud home to two national merit semifinalists as well as four additional students who were commended. Those two semifinalists will continue in the process as they make Germantown proud with their continued academic excellence. Finally, we recently held conferences where our staff spent the night engaging with parents and guardians of the community to discuss the continued growth of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. C, reports, student exchange program, Germany. Mr. Knox.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name is Samuel Brown. I participated in the exchange trip to Germany.
My name's Ariana Reineman and I also participated in this trip.
My name's Torren Schum. I also participated in this German exchange program.
So, they arrived last year, so that would have been in 2024, and the exchange started the prior year. And when they arrived, they arrived on a school bus, which was something they had never experienced before. So, there was lots of fun things for them to experience, like going on a school bus, which apparently was very cool for them. And then we got to meet our exchange students who most of us would then see this last summer.
And so, when we went over there, we, I think that it went quite smoothly. We had a, we bonded very well over all sorts of things going there. Under unfortunate circumstances, we did stay overnight in Dublin for one night. But it was, it was a bit of a blessing, I would say, because it was, it was something new to see on the way there. But other than that, I would say the arrival, going there, went pretty smoothly.
Alright, so one of the activities when the Germans came to America last, about a year ago, probably almost exactly, was we held this kind of like activity in the cafeteria. This was, you know, this was on the weekend after school, which was kind of like a combination of Halloween and Thanksgiving, since they weren't going to be here for Halloween and Thanksgiving, we kind of had to smoosh them together. So, family, parents of those of us who hosted, brought in all kinds of different foods. So, it was kind of like a community like Thanksgiving dinner for them to experience, which obviously they don't really have that holiday in Germany, so it was something new for them. And also, we held this pumpkin carving competition in which we had all these pumpkin carving tools and we carved pumpkins, which is something they do do in Germany. And we had a competition with three categories for most creative, scariest, and most, or best overall. And the pumpkin on the far right, number 18, was the one that won all three. That was, that was mine and my exchange partner Sebastian's. He was very, very good at pumpkin carving to my surprise. So, this was a real fun activity that we had last October.
So, we didn't get to experience any of the field trips they went on when they were here, but we did get to hear about it. So, the middle picture, which is the biggest picture, is them arriving in O'Hare. So, that was their first day here. And then there's obviously the picture of them with the bean and then eating in a restaurant, the Milwaukee Art Museum, and then the Buck Stadium. So, they got to do a bunch of different like cultural things that they don't really have there. I mean, they have art museums and things like that, but they got to see it from an American perspective.
So, we also went on many field trips when we were in Germany. Some of these we went on with our exchange students, some of them we went alone. So, if you look in the middle top picture, you can kind of almost barely see it. To the left of it, there's this castle we went to called the Burg Elts, which was beautiful. We got a tour of it. If you can see, me and two other of the students who went on, they sold us little replica swords, which were, they weren't real, but they were really cool. So, it was a lot of cool cultural stuff that you could buy there. But the castle itself was real. It was really awesome to experience. You can also see that in the top right, a picture of our group there. We also went in the bottom right to this city called Worms, which is, it's kind of debated in Germany, but it's said to be the oldest city in Germany with this very beautiful old cathedral, which we got to see, which was awesome. The middle bottom picture, we went to this town called Heidelberg, which is very famous. It has, I believe it's the longest pedestrian walkway in Europe, so lots of beautiful stores there, just a lot of beautiful architecture. Bottom left is our bus driver who drove us to the Burg Elts and also to a youth hostel that we stayed at overnight. The top left is called the Kletterwald, which was, I believe translates to climbing park. We have similar things in America where you're hooked up to a harness and you're kind of climbing through a dense forest. But we did that with our exchange students. It was a little rainy, but it was still very fun.
Yeah, so, memories when they came here in America were, they had some very unique experiences. As one of them, you can see is Ari with her exchange student at Costco. That is something they don't have there. Basic department stores, like Target, Costco, things like that, they don't have there, so they found that very interesting. Another one is Sam with his exchange student at the football game. They do not have anything close to football games there. So, that was a very unique experience. And then, so the top left and middle left, both were at a barn with another one of the students here wanted to host a gathering for everyone else. And in the top right is also from the same day. There was a lot of bonding experiences there. There was bags, there was a bonfire, things that I don't believe are very common in Germany for them. So, that was very unique. And then UWM was another thing that they got to see as, I don't think, I don't think they tour many colleges there. I think that's a very American thing. So, that was also new.
So, when they were in America, the first thing they did was they arrived and it was homecoming spirit week, so that was a big shock for them. And then they came to the PAC and they got to hear kind of about the school and everything and see the PAC. And then the bottom, I think that's the left, yeah. The bottom left, you can see Archie in his Packer jersey, which they did not have like a, I don't know, an emotional support dog there, so that was fun for them to see. There was a photo of him eating somebody's backpack, but I did not have a good picture, so I did not put that in. But then you can see, I think that's Frau Germin up there in the left, and she's just talking to them in homeroom. And then this is outside the PAC, is the big one in the middle, and that's them kind of talking about their culture and everything with the German one students. Homecoming. So, homecoming is something that they don't get to experience there. So, these are some of the pictures. Like, there's me in the bottom with Antonia, my exchange student, at the pep rally. Actually, that's at the top. But the one at the bottom is the powder puff game. And then the middle, there's a few girls with their exchange students taking pictures for homecoming. And then Sam and his exchange student Sebastian. And then I believe that was Florentina and Vicky in the corner. But that was something that they didn't get to experience. They have something similar called the AVI ball, but that's just a graduation ball, so it's not anything near as exciting as homecoming.
So, school in Germany was quite an experience. I, I enjoyed a lot of it as it's very different from school here. School here, you have the same classes every day for the exact same amount of time, whereas in Germany, it's by week. So, you don't have the same kind of classes every day. You have different classes based on the day. And sometimes you get to go home at like one, which is pretty early. They usually always get to school on time, on the exact same time, but it's, it's a very different kind of school. I personally enjoyed it. All of my classes with my exchange student were in the relatively same proximity, so that was kind of similar. But I, in the bottom left picture, I met two very good people. I, I liked them very much. They, they were very kind and very welcoming to school in Germany.
So, before we move on, there's the one picture in the top left, and I thought that was important to put in there to show that they still have some culture in their school, and that's a memorial made by students for all of the Jewish people who passed during the Holocaust, who went to their school.
Can I just ask, is the center picture detention or what?
So, the, the context of the center picture is there, there's this cellar in the basement when we went there for like a going away party almost, and we had to go grab a bunch of boxes and stuff. And so, I was like, well, I wonder if I go behind these bars, it'll look like they locked me up for good. And, and so, I was worried that if we fully closed it, I would have actually gotten locked in there. If you look closely, it's not fully closed. So, I was a little hesitant on closing it all the way, but I wanted it to look like I was locked up in the clink for a minute.
Alright, so this is just general memories that we made in Germany. A lot of, a lot of fun stuff. You can see in kind of the left bottom hand corner was the going away party that Torren just talked about. So, we held that at their school. It was kind of a little section of their school that was almost similar to our courtyard, where they had all these tables, they had a little garden, they actually had a chicken coop there, which was kind of cool. They had set some chickens there. We, they had a pizza oven, which was actually really cool. We got to make our own pizzas for this going away party. That's also the picture in the kind of left-hand middle corner. Also, bottom right, technically isn't in Germany, that's Ari and her exchange student in Strasbourg, which is a city in France that's just on the border with Germany. A lot of the Germans took their students to Strasbourg, since it's so close to where we were, to experience a little bit more of Europe. Bottom, there's me and my friend, my exchange student Sebastian, at a festival that we all kind of went to at the end, which was really fun, because we have stuff like that here, but it was different, because obviously different culture. Top left is a few of the girls posing with a sign that said Schum, which is my friend Torren's last name, so we're kind of just joking about that. And there was just a lot of fun stuff we did, just hanging out with these people, because we hadn't seen them in eight months to this point, so it was kind of like reuniting with old friends after a long while, which was really, really nice. I believe that might be the last slide.
Yep, that's the last one.
Yep, alright. Thank you guys for your time.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you for sharing those experiences and helping provide those experiences for the students when they came over. It's amazing.
Thank you, Mr. Knox, too, for, I know the request last year was with the approval of the trip to bring the students back, and I know everyone appreciates the great presentation.
Reports D, PAC update. Ms. House.
Hello. Thank you. Yes, this is just our semi-annual update on the going on at, going on at the PAC. I have another breakdown of hourly usage of the PAC. We are getting more and more every year. But, you know, it kind of all is even about the, about the same in each department. So, we are gaining evenly for community events and school events, but it is a lot. You can go ahead to the next slide. Yep. This year I did break it down. I think it's important to remember that for every public event here, there is also quite a few rehearsals that need to happen and school meetings and things like that. So, the PAC is getting used a ton. And that's just kind of a helpful breakdown of, you know, how many shows versus rehearsal time in the theater. Go ahead. This is our upcoming drama season for the high school. Our three shows, the one act play that goes wrong is next weekend, so go ahead and get your tickets. We have four shows and there is limited seating, so you're going to want to get your tickets for that. It's a great comedy, really funny. Three Musketeers comes up in February, that's the big cast play. And then Addams Family, the musical, is going to have the full live pit orchestra with our high school band. And that's always, you know, the huge event of the year, so you're going to want to get tickets for that, too. Oh, no, oh, there it is, okay. That is the KMS musical, Free Day Fridays. So, mark your calendars for that one. They have two shows and they're going to be here again in February for a week or two to practice and perform that show. This is kind of a breakdown of our rental groups. This is not all of them, but just kind of the highlights. We have Menominee Fall Symphony is coming this year. We have a couple of dance competitions coming in and kind of all of our regular stuff that comes in on a, on a annual basis. So, we are full up, lots going on. There's something for literally everybody. This is our community series for the 25, 26 school year. So, these are events that the PAC advisory team, we put together and host for the community, not outside groups coming and doing whatever they want. This is stuff we've chosen for the district. We already had our Kenny Rogers and Dolly Parton tribute that happened on October 3rd. So, next coming up is going to be the Germantown World Culture Fest that is free. So, swing, swing on down. We always have a lot of groups that participate, lots of food and, you know, games and stuff like that, so that's going to be fun. Really big show, John McGivern coming in. Lots of tickets sold for that, so you're going to want to get your tickets. Don't wait till the last minute. Get, get the good seats. But he is coming in a couple of days to come visit and check out the space, and we're gearing up for that show. We've also got the Tribute to Queen, which I know is going to be amazing. So, definitely come here if you're a fan of that group. And then the big ticket of the year, the Milwaukee Symphony is going to be here on June 20th, I think it is, for a full concert performance. If you would like to have a hand in selecting the shows for next year, please come join our team. You can also join virtually on our Google Meet if you can't meet in person. We meet about once a month, usually after school. I do need help selecting shows, making sure people are showing up to those shows, butts in seats. There's something everybody can contribute to this, even if it's just your opinion as a community member. So, if you would like to join that team, please email me and we'd love to include you. Just kind of a breakdown, special thanks to our volunteers that come in and make all these events possible. We have about half the volunteer calendar up for this year, and you can sign up on our website. You can also email me. I'll get you, get you on the schedule. It doesn't matter if you have experience or not. We take middle school age and older, and, you know, there's something almost every weekend, so lots to do here. This is a breakdown of our basically budget for this year. We are increasing our ticket revenue over time. A lot of that is due to our summer camps, which have become very, very popular, which is Crete, I love that, but also we are doing bigger and bigger shows, which helps offset the costs as those get more expensive as well. And you'll see that our rental revenue is quite high, probably as much as we can get out of this space without sacrificing other school events. We have some big projects kind of going on this year. We are working on getting Orchestra Pit net to make the orchestra pit safer while we have our musicals. We've been doing some vendor tables. You might have seen us out in the community. If you do, come check us out. We're handing out our brochures. If you're one of those people that likes to have a paper copy, come check us out. We are going to be at the Candy Land Germantown Chamber event, which is November...
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, November 14th. Yep, we're going to be out there, so come check us out that day. We also have some technology updates that have been happening, because this is our seventh or eighth year, so we've been having to keep up with some, some minor technology upgrades. And of course, we are working on increasing our foot traffic to our social media pages and to our website. That's really important, because the physical marketing is really just really expensive. So, we are trying to direct people to those online pages. If you are not already a follower of the Germantown PAC page on Facebook, that is where you can find all the latest information and pictures. Go ahead to the next one.
Sorry, it's November 15th.
November, November 15th, yes. I think it's also the day of the Christmas parade.
It's the day of the parade.
Yeah, Christmas parade. So, you can check us out. So, speaking about online presence, if you have a second, leave us a review on Yelp or TripAdvisor and you can get us higher in the ranking, so we pop up as something real cool to do in Germantown. So, I think we should be higher on the list than we are. But all the reviews have been very positive. We could just use some more, so more people recognize this as a center of community activity, which it is. Lots of Facebook likes and followers, and you can also call the box office or leave us an email if you have any questions or want to purchase some tickets. I think that was all of my slides. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Mr. Brown? I do. I saw the MSO Milwaukee Symphony Orchestra. Is that the full orchestra that's going to be here?
I think that's most of them. I can't guarantee who specifically is going to be here, but it's, it's most of them. We got that from a generous donation. And so, it's going to be a pay what you can event, which is great. If you can pay a lot, if you can only pay a little, it is going to be reserved seating, so you can pick your seats. But we're hoping that it's something that everybody, no matter what your financial abilities are, that you can come to this concert as long as you get your tickets early.
That's a, that's a very unique opportunity.
Yes, we're very lucky to have them.
Good.
I would just add, thank you, Heather. I know being on the advisory team with Mr. Pollock as well, you've done a lot of heavy lifting to make that community series more robust now in year two, so thank you. And I think it's, the more we can publicize that, the opportunities to see really great shows in that series are going to be excellent for this community.
Awesome.
Yeah, I think that's the first thing that stood out. Between that and really maximizing the room time, if you want to. Dr. Reuter and I were talking right before this meeting started. I think there's two setups behind us.
Yeah, so there's you guys, there's a choir concert getting ready behind you, and behind that is the play that is next Friday. So, we've kind of just got to do everything all at once, because there's only so much time in the day to switch.
Yeah. I think it's amazing to watch this kind of over the years expand and become more robust, as Dr. Reuter said. This programming is phenomenal. We talked when you had mentioned, don't tell anybody yet, but I think we got the Milwaukee Symphony Orchestra. I'm excited for that. Crown Jewels is probably going to be a pretty fun time, too, so really just kind of upping that entertainment value that's coming out here. It's all amazing work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others? Good job. Thank you. E, food and nutrition update. Ms. Seefel.
Hello. Okay. Just want to give a real quick food and nutrition update. At the beginning of the school year, we have a hydroponic lab that was set up. I have a few pictures there. On the left is actually our micro flex stations. That's where we actually start our seeds. And then we have, in the second one, we have a RO system where we actually, the water that is put into each of the flex farms, and then we have a micro flex which connects each of the farms together, so the water just filters through each of the farms. And the last picture, you can actually just see all the farms in their place. So, kind of starting out, well, first of all, we're working with the science department and the environmental club. We're working with the food and consumer science. They're all helping actually grow the produce. So, they're actually going in, they're germinating the seeds, and you can actually see that is actually after two days it takes them to germinate. And then they, from there, they go into the micro flex station for a week before they're transplanted into one of the flex farms. And what's really neat is that's only a one week difference from the germination to where you have the seedlings. And in the next picture, you'll see what it looks like after 28 days. And this is what it looks like at harvest time. Each one of those units will produce 25 to 30 pounds of lettuce. We have it on a rotation schedule, so we're able to harvest every single Monday. And then they do transplanting again on Tuesdays. So, on the average, we're getting probably 10 to 12 large bins of lettuce that we're able to provide the lettuce for all schools throughout the district. And here, we're actually, we're, we're doing some micro greens. Those are, we're serving on the salad bar at the high school. We have several different kinds from radish to broccoli to sunflower. Those actually have like a nice nutty flavor to them. They're super rich in nutrients and antioxidants. So, we're just kind of experimenting with those along with some fresh herbs that we started recently. We're growing chives, fresh basil, parsley, cilantro, which the kitchen staff are... which the kitchen staff are able to use in some of the scratch based cooking, which is kind of our goal to kind of go back to some of that. So it's been pretty exciting. We're actually growing mini cucumbers, cherry tomatoes, and snacking peppers. So I wanted to share a picture with you. Last May, you approved a purchase of servary equipment at Kennedy Middle School. So I wanted to share that with you so you can see that is complete. We mirrored the serving lines on both sides, so we're able to get the students through much quicker. And there's a lot less congestion in there. So it turned out really nice. And then something new that we're currently working on is student ID cards at the elementary school. Trying to make it uniform across all four schools. Some were using PIN numbers, some were using barcode sheets. Teachers were having to, you know, check off who's having lunch on these sheets. So what we decided to do, they just input the lunch counts into the Skyward system. And then at lunchtime, they hand out the cards to the students having lunch and milk. And they just bring them, they scan them under the barcode scanner and away they go. So it's working really nice. It's going super fast with the students and we have zero errors. We don't have the wrong student being rung up. So...
Jill, that's currently at two of our elementarys?
Currently at Amy Bell and Rockfield. I'm hoping to implement next week one of the other elementary schools. I need to be there for the first few days, just to make sure things are going smoothly. But right now, it's working very well. And then last of all, I just wanted to share a goal with you. My goal this year is to increase the meal counts. We're currently, we're running steady, you know, where we were last year. But I would like to actually create student food groups at each of the schools where I can go in, we can kind of look at the menus, they can tell me likes, dislikes. And then I can also do some, you know, taste tests and samplings with them so that we can actually improve the menus, you know, more to the student likes. Any questions that you have for me?
Mr. Lewis?
I don't have a question, but I just want to thank you for all the photos in your report. Seeing is believing and picture is worth a thousand words. So it was nice to see the photos of all of that since we don't tour on a regular basis, the schools. And it was nice to see.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Mr. Brown?
Well, it's better than photos. We walked down to the, to the lab and actually got the test, taste tested. So that was even better. That was impressive.
And I do have some lettuce for you after this board meeting before you go into closed session. So for you to taste the different lettuce. We're currently growing five different kinds. We have romaine, summer crisp, kale, arugula, and butterhead. So it's nice seeing the different varieties and to be able to taste test the different ones.
Are you good?
I just want to say thank you. You undertook a pretty expansive project to get that lab up and running. You switched your hat to general contractor for a little bit.
Yeah.
We were talking and it's amazing you were able to save enough money to be able to get, get that project up, up and running that way. Excited, I think, is the building, the school system itself. Obviously, we are. I had an opportunity, Dr. Reuter and I, when we were here for our Monday meeting, he snuck me in there on a professional development day. And as that door was open while we were in there, there was multiple staff members that must have been on break kind of poking their head in and very excited to see what was going on and what would all involve. So it's interesting to see how much the different classes that can really pull in and clubs that can pull in and affect the district wide. So thank you, by the way, for having that media event, being able to share like a truly positive development for the district. I know sometimes that public speaking isn't the funnest, but I think you did a fantastic job representing the district. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing done. We can move on.
Can I end up real quick?
Yes, go ahead. Before we leave the, the school and move on to the village, I'd like to give a shout out to the Germantown Wall of Sound. You may have seen the award in the lobby this past week and they competed down in Whitewater and state competition took second place. So very cool. These kids are, students have been out there training since mid-July. It all came to head, so it was, it was really neat to see and congratulations to the Wall of Sound. That's both the marching band and the color guard.
Fantastic work. Thank you for bringing that. F, Village of Germantown Leesam reports. Mr. Pollak with Parks and Recs.
So Park and Rec met last week on the 15th. Couple of items just to bring up. Going forward, starting actually with the last meeting and going forward, the park and recreation meetings are, or will be streamed, have been streamed, so that's an improvement. So anybody who wants or is interested in those meetings can now virtually attend those if they don't want to make it to the village hall. We also discussed the 2526 winter and spring fees. And we did approve those fees with some small changes. And they are going to be moved to the village board for their consideration and possible approval. We also received an update on Kids Club. Through the first three weeks of school at all five sites, which they, they host them here on GSD grounds, there have been 1,252 kids. And to give some perspective on that, that's roughly 70 more than last year. 2023 had just over 1,000 and 2022 had about 1,173. Last item is for public interest. On October 23rd, Park and Rec, there is a Park and Rec fundraiser being held at Blades Golf on Maple Road. Half of their per hour bay rentals will be, will benefit the village's park and recreation department. So if you're a golfer or, or just want to go have some fun, head on over to Blades, which is a newer business to our area. I have not been there, but from what I've heard, it's actually pretty cool. They have the traditional golf bays where you can act like you're a good golfer. And they actually have a putting grade that you actually do your putting instead of just pretending to hit into a screen. So sounds like fun. October 23rd, all day actually on the 23rd. So sneak away from work, head over there a little early and, and benefit the Park and Rec department.
Fantastic. Thank you. Mr. Boy with the Economic Development Committee.
Sure. So the Economic Development Commission meets on 10/28, which is a conflict because that is our annual meeting. So the following meeting that I will be attending is on November 11th and I will report back then.
Thank you. And myself with the Planning Commission meeting, we covered a lot of topics. That meeting went fairly late. But specific to the district, I'll just cover the one. It's the Blackstone Creek Development. They are looking to add multiple units of apartment. So they're going to look for 205 units total. It's going to be eight units of two-story walk-ups, so for 135 units. And then another 70 units of multifamily. It sounds like that's going to be multiple levels of apartments with potential commercial on the first floor. We looked at that with the Rofers report and we're judging, or decimating between 18.87 total students depending on the makeup of the multi-two-story buildings to potentially as low as 12.3 students total for that project. So I think that's going to bring, as far as the student impact throughout the three levels, that should be more than easily to support for our district. I do think, and Dr. Reuter and myself had started having conversations about our flexible school zone, maybe the best way to describe it. And potentially as these, these unit-based construction projects continue to come forward, per unit or per construction project, where do we want to place those students? It might be flexed. But that'll be a continued conversation for this board just to manage student level impact to the buildings in a more, more sufficient way. Other than that, I think there will be, that project does include a drive-through restaurant named Culvers. At this time, I think it's going through some revisions that was tabled, but that should come back for approval. And then there's one more commercial lot as, as part of that project. So that is going to be moving forward. That is occurring without the request or proposal or discussion around any sort of village funding or TID financial incentives for that project to take place. So the developer is doing that in lieu of utilizing taxpayer dollars. So I think that is a positive that we are seeing. And that is the only topic that directly, I think, impacts the district. From there, we'll move on to citizen comment. It's item four. I have two. I'm not, there is in the packet a full narrative of what I explained in the process, but since we have two, we have plenty of time to get you both in. Is it Karen for the GPA, GEAP rep?
Hi, my name is Carrie Schwarten and I'm a full-time teacher at MacArthur and the GEA representative for tonight's board meeting. Please let me know if you have any questions and I will try to answer them if I can or we'll bring them back to the GEA leadership for follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you. And what's citizen? Dominic? General phone. Come, come on down.
Quite proud tonight. I just want to thank the board for all the work they've been doing and updating everything. I was really impressed. I don't know if Ms. Ellis is still here.
She's up in the booth.
Great, great job. As a taxpayer, it's, makes my heart feel good that I was willing to help make an investment in a facility that will be used for more than just concerts and, you know, plays here. It's being used, it's being utilized as we had hoped it was and that it would be. So great job. Thank you on behalf of me and any other taxpayer who feels the way I do. Also to Ms. Seefel for the, the gardens. That is great idea. That is thinking out of the box, which is something that we don't do enough of in this community. And I'm really, really great. I was really impressed by it. The reorganization at Kennedy Middle School for the lunch, feeding the kids, getting them through, getting them in and out is, was done very well, very efficiently. And the hydroponic gardens are absolutely marvelous. I have not seen them, but the pictures told me another investment well worth made. So thank them for the hard work that they've put in and thank you guys for giving them the ability and, and what they need to get it done. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all we have for community comment. I can move on to item five, consent agenda. We have A, approval of September 16th, 25 meeting minutes. B, approval of September 30th, 2025 meeting minutes, open session only for closed session. C, approval of teacher contracts. And D, approval of donations.
Approval of consent agenda items A through D.
Second. Mr. Barney with the motion. Mr. Brown with the second. Any discussion?
I will read the donations.
Yeah, please. Thank you.
Tonight's donations, Bob Soderberg, $1,000 towards the Performing Arts Social Media Advertising. Kewanosup Germantown, $750 towards the Performing Arts Center Community Series. Burke Development, $250 to Germantown High School Girls Golf. Scott Heffley, $500 to Germantown High School Palms. An anonymous donation of $375 to the Deaf Heart of Hearing, Deaf Blind account. Clean Mark, $250 to the Germantown High School Girl Swim and Dive. MacArthur PTA, $3,104.70 to MacArthur Elementary for new basketball hoops, padding and nets, lines painted on the blacktop of the playground and playground balls. An anonymous donation for microphone stands and cables, approximately $1,500 value to the Germantown School District Band Program. Kennedy Middle School PTA, $2,000 to the Kennedy Middle School Sixth Grade Junior Achievement of, towards $1,000, I believe, for that. Kennedy Middle School Eighth Grade Year-End Celebration, the other $1,000. Lucas Bridger, Eagle Project Lost and Found Station, donated to the MacArthur Elementary. And Rockfield PTA, $5,500, $4,000 of that going to Camp Minikani and 1,500 going to the Matt Wilhelm Incorporated and BMX Show for Fitness Day at Rockfield Elementary. Mr. Barney, do you have a total there?
I did not total it up.
I was just assuming that was usually a segue, so. Very generous donations this month and we'll hear more in the grants that will be coming from teaching or from the finance committee as well.
Thank you. Mr. Castro, can you just go over the teacher contracts? I think there's a unique...
Yeah, so the one teacher contract that we have in there is for Brenda, who is going to be serving as a long-term sub. She is a retired teacher who is going to be filling in. Whenever it hits about that 60-day mark or beyond, we can do a contract. So we are electing to do that with Brenda. The benefit of this is she actually just retired and she'll be taking over not only in her content area, but actually the classroom she was in. So the continuity between the instruction for the students is something that you can't really pass up on. So we're pretty fortunate to have that for us.
Absolutely. I just wanted to say I appreciate her passion to come back in post-retirement and lend a helping hand in the building again, so.
Our, our administrators have done a really good job in trying to go after those that have retired. Because once again, that continuity is something you can't really pass up on, so.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Yep.
Russ?
Yes.
Yeah, just eyeballing the donations. It, it looks to be around $15,000 this month. So that's just outstanding to see the generosity of our community.
Absolutely. Any other discussions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, consent agenda passes. We are on to teaching, item six, teaching and learning. I believe I'm handing this over to Tracy.
Yes, I served as the replacement chairperson for the meeting on October 7th. A handful of items just to mention and go through. Mr. Mizziak gave us a, an update, presentation, an update on the state report card updates. Couple of items just to note with regards to some of those key updates for, for the new report cards coming out. There's been an updated rating category score range. Excuse me. The report cards will use the two years of achievement data, last year's and this year's, or this, two years ago and the previous year. There's a temporary scale adjustment that was used in '23, '24 that will not be applied. And then norming updates have been applied to ensure consistent statewide comparisons for the '24, '25 state report card. Some additions, there'll be some test participation reporting. There's third grade reading data due to Act 10, or excuse me, Act 20. And then also there'll be some law violation reporting items as well. Katie Cole presented us with the Grace Commons Beyond 18 program. She updated us on, on the program itself because there was a transition from, or to, I should say, Grace Commons as far as the new location for the program for this school year. Mrs. Cole also provided us a comprehensive counseling model process and timeline update. Basically, they're, they're going to go through, in effect, a curriculum review process similar to what we've done in recent times with other areas of review. The idea here is that the process will begin with a thorough analysis of the existing model, how it fits with the model provided by DPI. We'll take a look at the current competencies and standards and curriculum. Will be analyzed to identify the strengths and where we can go ahead and improve. Also, it'll be, we'll do some research as far as best practices, educational trends, reviewing any new curriculum materials and piloting those materials. So a lot of the same sort of thing that's already happening in, in other areas as we review curriculum. And the benefit is that we'll be able to integrate with platforms like NextPath, which was more recent addition to our district and aligned with the portrait of a graduate and the state report card as well. We also received an update on the professional development that occurred on September 29th. Those days, that day's focus centered on two key areas. Strengthening the connection between the work of professional learning communities and understanding by design and engaging staff in trauma-sensitive schools training. For people who've been following along, we've had people certified... For people who've been following along, uh, we've had people certified, uh, in trauma-sensitive schools, and, and we're basically continuing to disseminate that information out. Um, I believe, if I remember correctly, there'll be a, a follow-up as well to, to see, uh, if, as far as, uh, what went well, what didn't go well, what we, we might need to, to continue to, uh, focus on, and keep, continue to, to share that information. And then lastly, uh, I believe it's lastly, yep, uh, one of the topics was an English eleven course description in UBD. So what was brought forward, uh, was, uh, Mr. Mizziak brought forward proposing adding a Ling, English eleven as a required eleventh grade course. What was attached to our, our packet was a, a general course description that would be added to the course sequence. The benefit is that there's a clear progression between English ten and senior-level ELA offerings, making sure that students experience a balanced, standards-aligned curriculum throughout their time at GHS. As part of the work that's, that will be ongoing is the understanding by, by design process and curriculum alignment. Ultimately, what is going to be, uh, presented here as far as the, uh, motion is basically to, to help, uh, kick off the process. Ultimately, uh, the documents, the UBD documents are, are, will be presented ultimately in draft form, so there's still some work to be done and ultimately submitted back to the Teaching and Learning Committee for approval. So that being said, uh, come forward with a, a motion with a positive recommendation from the Teaching and Learning Committee to approve the English eleven course description, and to add English eleven as a required course in the ELA course progression pending a review and approval of course material.
Second?
No.
Uh, that comes forward, the positive recommendation does not require a second. Um, however, I am going to ask for amendment to that motion. There was some discussion at the meeting regarding, uh, what review and approval of course materials, and just to collect, uh, clarify that language and to ensure that the course can be posted, um, within the, uh, November, I believe it has to come out, correct? The course guidebook for our enrollees to select for next year, um, we need to just clean that up, the language up there a little bit. So the amendment would be to strike, um, uh, from the following, pending a review of approval of course material, and to add, uh, the review and approval of course materials and the understanding by design, AKA UBD, uh, unit plan for English eleven shall occur prior to June first, twenty-twenty-six. So it's a two-step process, we're approving the course and putting a, uh, timeframe of which the material and the full course development has to occur by. I would need a second for that.
Second?
Okay, with the second, any discussion? That we will be voting on the amendment. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the amendment passes, and we will now, um, continue to, uh, continue discussion on the full, um, motion, the amended motion, I should say. Uh, is there any discussion on that?
I appreciate you offering the amendment, I think it makes sense just to remove any question, that the course can get approved, it can get in the catalog, and then we'll worry, um, about any UBD approval going forward.
Yeah, uh, uh, absolutely, uh. Dr. Reuter and Mr. Mizziak brought it to my attention at our weekly meeting, um, just to clea, clarify that language, and I think it's important. I think that was the intent, we were looking to, to drive at the committee level, um, and just fell short of the mark on it, so. I have one question that didn't get asked then. Are in-going seniors going to be able to take this as an elective? Or has that?
No, the, so seniors for next year would not have access to the English eleven course.
Okay.
Some of the electives that they still will have access to would, uh, share some of the course content.
The, yeah, the material will cross over.
Correct. There'd be one year of overlap.
Thank you. I have no further questions. Any other? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes.
That's all from teaching and learning.
All right, thank you. Uh, item seven, Buildings and Grounds Committee, back to Mr. Pollack.
Buildings and Grounds met at October seventh. A few items that we discussed, first one was our, our now, uh, regular work order completion report covering, uh, basically the month of September. Uh, Frank gave us an update that, uh, one hundred and seventy-three items, uh, were completed during the month. There were a couple items that were high priority. Uh, Frank also gave us a, an overview of, in a summer recap for all of the projects during this past summer. Uh, I would actually encourage everybody to take a look at all of the different things, and even the list is, uh, when you take a look at it, it's, it feels like a lot, but then there's also many layers to every one of those different line items that were included. But basically, the, the recap itself, where it was all the in-house projects, uh, from sweeping and waxing the floors and, and all of that stuff that happens over the course of a couple months that, that the kids are out of school. And that is, uh, above and beyond the regular, daily, weekly, monthly custodial related tasks itself. Uh, also, uh, last topic that we covered was the Ami Bell Overflow Lot paving. Uh, what was brought forward to the committee as part of the twenty-five, twenty-six capital projects list, uh, was a proposal to pave and strip the overflow lot at Ami Bell Elementary. So this would include the asphalt grade and paving, the fine grade, grading, existing stone base, constructing a four-inch compacted hot mix asphalt pavement, layout and paint the pav, pavement markings with appropriate, uh, Wisconsin DOT marking paint and, and any ADA requirements, um, and also the, the, uh, the estimate that it could be tentatively completed by the end of October. There was some discussion regarding crosswalk and additional signage, as well as, as, um, reaching out to the county about any sort of involvement that they may require on their end. Ultimately, uh, the committee, uh, approved a motion two to one, that a positive recommendation be made to the finance committee to approve the Ami Bell Overflow Lot paving, using Johnson and Sons paving for the amount of fifty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars funded out of the Fund Forty-One Capital Improvements budget, and Mr. Loth will have more on that in his finance committee update. And that's all from Buildings and Grounds.
Thank you. Uh, item eight, Personnel Committee, Mr. Brown.
The Personnel Committee met a little earlier this evening at five o'clock, and we went over the usual reports and updates. There are no teacher resignations, we covered teacher contracts, and Mr. President, you were, did pointed out, uh, Ms. Ripplinger rejoined in Kennedy Middle School. Uh, we went over staffing updates, and then, uh, Dr. Castro covered the Administrator, Professional, and Technical Employee Comp Study, uh, going to be very similar to the blueprint that we've used in the previous comp studies over the last couple of years. Then we moved on to new business, and we had Michelle representative from our, our Insurance and Benefit Group come and do a initial information educational series that Dr. Castro has, uh, kind of initiated. Uh, she did a good job recapping the benefits for the employees. Um, I won't even attempt to redo her presentation, so I'll direct you to the YouTube channel so you can take it all in, but in, in thirty-thousand-foot view, uh, she's going over the benefit of being self-funded and how that has paid off over these last couple of years. In fact, the savings that we have, uh, obtained being self-funded this year, they're, they're coming forward with, uh, improving the dental plan, and that does come at a cost because insurance industry and, and insurance benefits are, are one area that have outpaced any others in inflation, so those costs keep going up. But the savings that we were able to incur, uh, being self-funded, the district is going to be picking up the additional cost for the improved dental plan for employees. Um, then we went over the, um, contracts for advisors and the Destination Imagination, uh, folks that are going to be stepping up to, to help out with those programs. Um, the insurance and benefit renewal does come to the board with a positive recommendation from the Personnel Committee to approve the proposed UMR options for health insurance, Delta Dental and Dental IMED coverage for the two thousand twenty-six plan year to include the enhancement to dental, Delta Dental coverage and the associated cost increase to be covered by the district, with all costs noted in the Germantown School District twenty-twenty-six benefit rate sheet provided.
That comes forward with a positive recommendation, does not require a second. Any, any discussion?
Oops, sorry.
Sorry. Any discussion? I think just to your point, Mr. Brown, uh, highlighting, uh, the self-funded, uh, initiative that this district undertaken several years ago has, uh, paid off in two ways. One, consistent savings compared to what would occur if we were in the privatized market, and, uh, the maintaining of benefit. So we haven't seen a loss of benefit, and now we're able to roll some of that money over to enhance the dental for our, and, and take that on as the district cost, not the employee cost.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion?
Um, Mr., I just remind that during that meeting, I shared that this was the first part of most likely a seven-part series related to Germantown financials. The remainder of that series will come out of the finance committees moving forward monthly, uh, with guest speakers as well as administration showing, um, the different aspects of school finance and where the district stands. So tonight was the first of that series, um, through the lens of employee benefit and self-funding payoff after three years.
And we're going to pull that video and, and isolate.
Yep, we'll, we'll create then a financial package on our YouTube channel that will highlight those specific spotlights in the reports moving forward.
Yeah, I think the, and to Mr. Brown's point, the depth of conversation, the presentation that we got really highlights the granular, um, financial impacts to the district and the employees, um, so it, it's really going to be a benefit. The community has a lot of questions, what are we doing about employee retention, employee benefits, those types of things. Uh, this is one of many scenarios that have played out over multiple years of commitment from this board and the district and the administration to, uh, preserve some of this stuff. So we're going to highlight it, and we're going to do a, a series, not only in, you know, around employee benefits, but, uh, the finance.
School funding, um, yeah, our long-term facility, uh, everything.
Yeah, and I could see that ballooning into a project around teaching and learning, or.
Correct.
Some of the other processes that take place. Uh, quick-hit videos for the community to go see and understand and take in a lot of the questions that they have. Maybe they can't see this long meeting or, or find it easily in a packet that extends a, a conversation that extended over multiple meetings for months or potentially a full year, um, so we're going to try to get that information, uh, more readily accessible to you, and these presentations are going to be part of that. So I appreciate that initiative. That does come forward with a positive recommendation, does not require a second. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes.
And the second recommendation that we come forward with, with the positive recommendation is from the Personnel Committee to approve the advisor and DI contracts.
Coming forward with a positive recommendation, does not require a second, any discussion? Hearing, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes.
And that wraps it up for the Personnel Committee.
Uh, Finance Committee, item number nine, uh, Mr. Barney's going to step in for this one.
Yeah, thank you. Finance Committee met earlier this evening, uh, we approved the minutes and the monthly vouchers as we do every month. Uh, we also received some excellent news from Mr. Mizziak. He reported that the school district has received a grant of one hundred thousand dollars from United Way of Greater Milwaukee and Waukesha County through its Helping Kids Succeed Initiative. On behalf of the board and the district, I want to thank County Line Elementary Teacher Dennis Kohler and Principal Schultz for bringing this opportunity forward. This grant funding will be used to strengthen literacy, math, and sensory support programs in the district. Uh, moving on to full board, item nine B, approval of hydroponic gardens. Uh, this is coming back to the board from an earlier approval because of some additional expenses that went over a not-to-exceed motion. The committee brings forward a motion with a positive recommendation to the Board of Education to approve an additional expense of two thousand six hundred nineteen dollars and sixty-five cents for the construction project of Classroom A one oh two for a hydroponic vegetable garden at GHS to be funded from the Food and Nutrition Budget.
Comes forward with a positive recommendation, does not require a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. I apologize, there was, assuming there was no discussion on that.
Uh, item C is approval of Ami Bell Overflow Lot paving. Um, this is to grade and pave, uh, about thirteen thousand square feet lot across the street from Ami Bell Elementary, used for overflow, overflow parking. Uh, Finance Committee brings forward a motion with a positive recommendation to the full board to approve the Ami Bell Overflow Lot paving using Johnson and Sons paving for an amount of fifty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars funded out of Fund Forty-One Capital Improvements budget.
Comes forward with a positive recommendation, does not require a second, discussion? Mr. Pollack?
Uh, I, I was the one no vote in the committee. Um, I, we need that lot. Uh, I think that's safe to say, it, it would benefit, uh, those parents, teachers, anybody that's visiting the school, uh, because if, and some of us have been there during school, it's, it is very difficult to park in that lot, um, the existing lot. So I do think this is a much-needed, uh, lot at Ami Bell, however, it did not go through the traditional, or what should be the, the standard bid process, so I am going to remain a no on this vote. Um, and one other thing, too, that I just want to throw out there that was mentioned in the Finance Committee meeting, was, uh, signage and such, that, uh, this, this project, if it moves forward, could actually be done in a pretty quick turnaround, uh, but it was mentioned that signage, um, around the area, because folks who park in that lot will need to cross the street, uh, may not be readily available until later. Uh, I think it was winter or even end of winter that was mentioned. I think i- if this moves forward, we, we need to accelerate that signage, uh, for safety purposes. It, you know, whether it's extremely busy, not so busy, it obviously during certain times of the day is very busy with, uh, with traffic around there with all the students and parents picking up and leaving and all that kind of stuff. Uh, so it, I just want to be on record as far as, i- if this moves forward, that signage needs to be in place ASAP. We cannot wait, uh, weeks, maybe even months before that signage is, is placed out there properly.
Any other discussion? I have a follow-up question to Mr. Pollack there.
Sure.
Um, the site, the signage you're talking about, the safety signage, um, is the signage in doing the parking lot mutually inclusive? Uh, e, if the parking lot is not approved, do we still go forward with the signage for safety reasons?
I, I mean, I think so. I, people can utilize that area right now.
We don't currently have signage and it's utilized.
It, it's a gravel parking lot, it is utilized daily. If you're ever there, you'll see people.
Right, the way it was, the way it was, and I, I don't think he meant it this way, but it sounded like we'd only do the signage if we move forward with the parking lot. I'm saying, if we don't move forward with the parking lot, we know that there's a safety concern, um, I suggest that we'd look into getting the signage done.
Signs or no signs, I'm going to be a no vote. That's, so, but my, my point is, is that we might as well take advantage of, of the opportunity, if this does move forward, to, to get everything in place for safety.
Yeah, and I think signage is dependent on if that access to a crosswalk could be built, because currently it's, there, the signage would just be, this is a parking lot, there isn't a safety signage, because we don't currently have a crosswalk accessibility.
You could put it near the driveway entrance that most people are probably using to signify to drivers that there is.
Yeah.
Foot traffic crossing.
Foot traffic, yeah. But a, a, a standard crosswalk, we don't have that accessibility currently.
So I, I'm going to jump into this conversation here, and as Tracy noted, he was the single no vote at Buildings and Grounds, uh, I think for a hundred percent the correct reason. Uh, we're scoping out projects of this nature, uh, they have to go through a bid process, and this board has to be able to trust that that bid process took place honestly and effectively. Uh, I, I think there was plenty of time for that to take place, and this project still to get done before the winter. Uh, unfortunately, that didn't happen. Uh, the reasons we were given, uh, by Mr. Lord were that the time constraints didn't allow it to, or he felt it would, uh, cause the project to potentially get pushed back. The continued conversation currently around signage and crosswalk, uh, is. The continued conversation currently around signage and crosswalk is another one of my concerns, and I was a no vote at Finance on this for, for that reason and the following reason. The project wasn't scoped out in the beginning correctly. There wasn't beyond, we're going to asphalt the current gravelled area conversation around, let's build signing and signage into this project cost. Let's build in a culvert that allows for foot traffic from the lot away from the driveway entrance, but directly across from the entrance to the school itself. Those things need to happen when we're looking at these projects. And for those, the project to start on that flawed ground of not being sculpted out correctly, and then to be rushed through without a bidding process, and maybe they would have been caught in the bidding process, because one of those contractors may have said, did you think about this? Or in the discussion of when we're looking at bids, what does that RFP look like? Do we include these types of things? None of those things happened. And for, for those reasons, I, I have to be a no vote. It's, it's a lot that's utilized now. They can plow it just as easily as they can plow the, the blacktop. He said they plow it intermittent upon request of larger events there. I would think that this has to just be added to that plow schedule, or however you want to look at that. If the regular lot's being plowed, this, this lot's being utilized, so it probably should be included in that. Anyways, it's utilized daily. If I'm ever there, I always see cars parked across the street there. The employee lot and the general parking lot, it's small at the school. The footprint is small. So, it's not that we don't want the project done, but I, I can't support it as board president if the processes didn't take place that need to take place. And unfortunately, in this one, I think they could have, and it could still have been done. It was just chosen not to have occurred that way with, quite frankly, a weaker excuse on why it wasn't. But we're spending upwards of almost $60,000. We can't have that. Any further discussion? Mr. Barney?
I agree with the point that, yes, it should have gone out to bid. At this point, I don't think it's fair to try to send it back to go through a bid process since this vendor's price is already exposed. It could benefit the school to have it done, and we're running out of time to get it done this year. So, I will be voting in favor of the project.
Any further discussion? Mr. Law?
I'd like to point out that there is a crosswalk there. It's a little bit to the east on Willow Road and probably not convenient enough for, you know, the typical parking lot user to use. It's more for the nature center. So, I doubt that anyone's going to go to the crosswalk and use it. The other point is the traditional end of blacktopping in Wisconsin is the weekend before Thanksgiving. So, there is a, a time limit to get this done if we're going to get it done this year. As far as the price is concerned, I was unhappy about lack of quotes also, but the price seemed reasonable, and that's why I was a yes vote in Building and Grounds. So, I will be voting yes this evening for, to get the project done this year yet.
Thank you. I think I would just rebut a little of that with, when we're looking to spend taxpayer dollars on a project, I don't think the threshold should be, seems to be reasonable.
Okay, reasonable.
All right, any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
No. I heard, I think everybody's, but I'm going to ask for his hands. In favor, please raise your hand. Four opposed, please raise your hand. Thank you. That passes. Four to three.
All right, the next item, item D, is approval of snow removal bids. This is the same provider that has done snow removal for the past several years. The committee brings forward a motion with a positive recommendation to the full Board of Education to approve the three-year snow removal service agreement with De Angelis Construction LLC.
Comes forward with a positive recommendation, does not require a second. Any discussion?
Yes. Just want to point out that there were multiple competitive bids that were attached in the packet this evening.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, that passes.
All right, item E is approval of district-wide loaner laptops. They will primarily be used as checkout devices for staff when their laptops are in need of repair, for testing purposes in the IT department, and as overflow substitute laptops. Committee brings forward a motion with a positive recommendation to the Board of Education to purchase laptops from Bloom using common school funds for a total not to exceed $26,795.76.
Comes forward with a positive recommendation, does not require a second. Any discussion? I'll point out that while one bid was included in the packet for this discussion, we were informed that they did receive multiple bids, I believe two bids back, and this is the least expensive of the two, while providing the same resources. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. Ten new business discussion, action approval overnight travel request to Germany. Mr. Knox?
First, I'd like to thank the students who came in earlier to present. They were all pretty excited to do so and willing to do so. Nobody had to be really asked twice, and I hope that came across. One of the unexpected things for me tonight was hearing one of them say that after eight months, they really missed their friends, and that they were so excited to see that. And I got, I'll let them know tomorrow. I got a little, little emotional on that one. That meant a lot to me. There's a lot invested in the last trip, both in preparation for them to come here, as well as, you know, going over there and during that time. But it wasn't just me. There were a lot of parents in the community who were involved and helped pull these things together, as you saw from the pictures. And on their side also, there are a lot of parents involved. It's really two communities coming together, two schools sort of organizing it, but it gets so much bigger. And I really look forward to hearing further down the road, stories of not just after eight months, I was so happy to see them, but also maybe after, you know, five years, 10 years, whatever kind of reunions can take place. So, I'm putting forward the request to, to do it again, starting with hosting in the, basically a year from now, September, October of 2026. And then we would be traveling, which is the request, I guess, on, on the board tonight, to travel at the end of that school year to go visit the people who came to see us.
Fantastic, thank you. I'll entertain a motion, and then we can get to a little discussion.
Motion to approve. Correct. Motion to approve of the 20 students and two to three chaperones to travel to Blensheim, Hesseia, in Germany in June 2027, estimated June 13th to the 30th of 2027.
Mr. Boyer with the motion, assuming Mr. Pollack with a second.
I'll take the second.
Discussion?
I don't know how we don't vote for this stuff, because we, we heard it, we heard it tonight. We've heard it several times from other organizations in our district, in our schools, that these experiences, and to your point, they happen now, but hopefully they last forever in some way, shape, or form. Even, even if it's, well, in the olden days, you'd write letters to each other, but now you can do video calls. But, you know, these are, my son had an experience earlier this year that I'm amazed, too, that it sticks with, with these kids. So, I'm all in favor for all of these type of things, because it's the experience of it all that's way more educational than reading something in a book or practicing a conversation in, in German, or in English, or whatever the case might be.
Mr. Law?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for the students and their presentation. I want to compliment the students also. It was just an excellent presentation. The photos were great, and they covered all the photos, you know, on each, each slide also, so that, that was nice. You know, using the upper-left, lower-right terminology and that sort of thing. You know, since there weren't captions, they covered it really nicely and did a, just a fantastic job. So, thank you and thank them also from the board.
I will pass that on to them, because they got very little guidance from me on there than, please share both sides of it. And I'll pass that on, thank you.
Yeah, worked, worked well. The, it seemed like they wanted to leave quickly. We, we might have had a question or two for them, but, you know, since they wanted to go, no sense in extending the board meeting any longer than it's already going to be. But, but yeah, thank them. It was nice.
Just a great example of extending the classroom right beyond, on the walls of the school, and opening up opportunities for our students and the families in the community. To your point, I think it does connect two communities a world apart. It's fantastic. So, thank you for, for your efforts in it. Thank you for the parent support in it, and I'm glad as a board, we can support it with what will hopefully continue to be a yes vote here, but we'll find out shortly. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Knox, I just asked, are we in alignment to have our sister school come back again as well?
They are waiting for me to give them the green light. They're excited to start advertising on their side. I let them know that tonight's the meeting. So, yes, their expectation would be, they understand that we have to do approval for each exchange, but their expectation is that we will keep doing this just in perpetuity.
Excellent.
Fantastic. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. B, discussion, action of state report card resolution, that is going to be covered by myself. This board has had multiple conversations, whether it be at the teaching and learning level led by Mr. Mizziak and, and Dr. Reuter, or at the full board over what seems to be over the last year or so, and continue probably in even last year, as the, we see the state report card continue to update and change, and sometimes in a transparent manner, and other times in a completely non-transparent manner. But, but either way, it leaves us with a data point that, that not only do we use as, as a board and as administration, but the community uses as an ultimate judgment tool on success within the district. We, we obviously preach it's not the sole thing that should be. There's lots of reasons for that, and if you'd like to, you can probably go watch hours of meetings where we discuss that. So, I'm not going to get into all of that here. But a couple of peer districts passed a resolution that got my attention, most notably New London, Kettle, Marine, and Stafford, Strafford, sorry, passed a resolution around kind of an ask of DPI and some of our state legislators in regards to the continuous change of, of the DPI's state report card. And I think we see in our own community, it's just as simple as the community can't agree on, is this a good barometer to use or not from year to year? This year looks great, next year didn't look that great. Why, why is that? Is it because there were up and downs in, in success? Or were there up and downs in the matrix in which things were measured? Is the answer probably both on those? I think absolutely. But if we can't get this hammered out at a state level led by DPI in a manner in which we can use it as a consistent data mark, it just continues to drive angst and conversation within the community that's disruptive. I mean, I saw a post on this exact resolution, and when I'm about to read, I'm really confused on how anyone could disagree with that and say this is an agendized, weaponized item. But, but there were. So, there, there was that discussion in the community. But I think it's our responsibility to, to push this, this discussion forward and, and be a voice of leadership within the educational community in the state. And I have no problem joining what I believe are three respected districts throughout, throughout the state in their resolution. I did tweak it, I didn't take it verbatim. So, give me two seconds and hang in there, I will read the full. Resolution regarding steps need to improve the DPI school report card. Whereas the Department of Public Instruction has a history of changing elements on school report cards, and whereas these changes make it impossible to meaningfully compare data from year to year and from one district to another, and whereas communities and parents rely on DPI data to judge schools and school districts based on report card data, and whereas many significant changes can be made to improve the DPI report card. Now, therefore, it be, it be resolved that the Germantown School District Board of Education call on the state superintendent, Public Instruction, to amend the school report card process as follows. Student growth and achievement should be valued equally. Stop the practice of weighing, weighting student performance based on free and reduced lunch population. The soft bigotry of low expectations assumes poor students can't be smart. Recognize and reward schools with a high achievement placement. International and dual credit and career and technical education enrollment. Likewise, recognize and reward schools with high level of extracurricular involvement. Include fiscal efficiency in report card scoring. In order to properly implement the above elements, the state superintendent should, should slow down, include more school leaders in the process, and implement change that will last for, without, last for years without needing annual revisions. Be it therefore resolved that the resolution and support of the work being conducted by the Wisconsin School Leaders of Excellence, which I believe is where this originated from, be shared with the state legislators, the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, the local news media outlets, in order to raise awareness of how this issue impacts the Germantown School District and school districts across the state. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adopt the Germantown School District DPI State Report Card Resolution as presented.
Second. Mr. Barney with the motion, and I raised, but I believe Mr. Boyer got in there with a second. Any discussion?
I would share this was a topic of conversation with this region's superintendents as well, not necessarily this resolution, but the usefulness of the state report card with the consistent year-after-year change in the goalposts and expectations around it. It's hard to utilize and explain to the general public, but also it's hard to utilize internally for continuous improvement efforts. So, we look at other measures, but it is a front-facing public document that gets published in local media that is used comparably, but the elements are not comparable. So, with that, I, this is conversation we have risen, raised with our state superintendent of concern for the past two years.
So, when you bring forth the topic of conversation of superintendents in the area, what, I guess, what does that group?
As far as school districts, our surrounding North Shore School District, CISA-1 districts.
So, it's a CISA-1?
Representation, as well as we meet annually as a CISA-1 region of superintendents with our state superintendent, and this has been brought up the last two years as concern as to why there is continued change in calculation, weighting, variables, and why us as the local leaders of the district are not provided, are given the avenue to provide input on those changes.
Thank you for that.
Though we have to speak to our communities and boards about that.
Thank you for adding some of that context. I don't think that quite has made the discussion. Uh, maybe it has, from a level of kind of what's happening with the change of the report card, but thank you for adding that here tonight. Any further discussion? Mr. Pollack?
I'm certainly interested in seeing. I'm certainly interested in seeing where we are doing well, and how we're doing well. When I look at these report cards and see the last couple of years, the changes that are made, what I'm most concerned about with regards to our district is where we may not be doing as well as we hope, and that we should, and that's where the consistency comes into play. If somehow these changes, these recent changes are inflating our numbers in some way, shape, or form, not really interested in that. I don't want our numbers to be inflated. I actually want these numbers, even if they fall below what we think they are, I want to know about that, because those are the things that we should spend more attention on. So while I can see where people look at this and go, oh, they're, you know, they want to change the goalposts, they want to make us look better, actually, if we're not looking that good, I want to actually know about it. If we are better, and we are performing well, fantastic. That means we're actually doing the things that we need to do to help our students succeed, and maybe even exceed their expectations. So when I look at this, what it really comes down to is, give us the data that actually exists. Don't necessarily play this, that, or the other. I mean, I certainly understand the weightings and those type of things. I still don't always completely understand why certain districts have 40% on achievement, and we have 37, and another one has 35, but the two, what is it, on track to graduation and target group is 25%. But these other ones can be dramatically different depending on which district you're looking at. I fully admit, I'm still processing some of that as to why that exists, but I think the goal here, and the way I read this, is we need the consistency so we know where we're not actually performing as well as we should be, because that should be our focus. And so I'm all in favor for that. I don't necessarily agree with all the bullet points or tweak it, but the message is there, the message is out there that we need the consistency that these report cards should show us.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Loth.
I'm not on the Teaching and Learning Committee, but I was given the opportunity to complain a little bit. I'm not real happy about their range of numbers known as accountability score range, so I'll just mention the first two, and I think everybody will get it. A score of 84 through 100 is considered significantly exceeds expectations in five stars by the DPI. I would change that to 90 to 100 significantly exceeds expectations. Next range for DPI is 71 through 83.9 is exceeds expectations. I would move that through, I would move that to 80 through 89. So more of a standard grading system that I grew up with, and perhaps I'm showing my age, but these numbers here are ridiculous. You know, and 84 is not significantly exceeds expectations, and I think we should get back to reasonable percentages here for the grading system that we're using. That's all I got.
Thank you. I think I can just piggyback and agree with both of those statements that were just made, and to Tracy's point, it's about knowing factually where we're at. If it's worse, it's worse, and we can attack those issues. And this administration and the staff can attack those issues. If we can't understand if it's worse or better from year to year because it's constantly evolving and changing, it's going to continue to be a difficult data point to use, and it only drives divisive conversation in the community as to what it means, because each year we spend hours explaining, these are the tweaks that were made, this is what it means, so the numbers aren't comparable, and continues to be the case of instantaneous comparison. Oh, this changed from this year to that year, what's going on here? And we've spent hours explaining or discussing it in public meetings, what those changes are and why it's not apples-to-apples anymore based off the changes that occurred. We could speak for hours on this and have, does anyone else have anything to add? Hearing none, all in, roll call on this resolution?
If you prefer.
Take a roll call on it.
Ewer.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Barney is a yes. Loth.
Yes.
Pollak.
Yes.
Higginbotham.
Yes.
Boyer.
Yes.
And seven yeses, leaving no opposed. That resolution passes. C, discussion on action to approve early college credit program and Start College Now applicants, Mr. Mizziak.
Multiple times a year, I bring to the board our high school students who are applying to be a part of the early college credit program or the Start College Now program. So tonight I bring to you one Germantown High School student who applied through ECCP or the Early College Credit Program. The student is requesting multiple courses including foundations and theology, healthcare delivery in the United States, and introduction to Greek life. The paperwork was submitted before the October 1st deadline, and this is for the spring semester. And then we had a total of 15 students submit paperwork, excuse me, for Start College Now. Four students submitted paperwork for multiple courses including real estate law, introduction to networks, principles of electricity, and cable wiring. Eleven students submitted Start College Now applications for the Certified Nursing Assistant Program, and again, all of their paperwork was submitted before the October 1st deadline.
Thank you. Take a motion.
Motion to approve the early college credit program and the Start College Now requests as presented.
Second. Mr. Higginbotham with the motion, Mr. Brown with the second. Any discussion?
Yes.
I have a family member that's represented in the applications you're being asked to approve, so I will be abstaining from voting on this item.
Thank you for that transparency. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, and we have one abstain.
Abstain.
That passes. D, discussion on summer school report, Mr. Mizziak.
This is another annual report that I bring to the board to give you a recap of the data that's associated with our summer school program. This year, in 2025, we held our summer school programming at Kennedy Middle School for students who are entering 4K through 8th grade, and our Germantown High School program was hosted at GHS. Across both sites, we had 814 students who participated in 34 different course offerings that supported academic growth, enrichment, and skill development. In the report, I provided a summer school snapshot of our 4K through 8th grade summer school program enrollment. This year, we enrolled 574 students into our program, which is very similar to what we enrolled last year, in terms of our enrollment last year was 576, and that was an uptick from the previous three years. Our programming at Kennedy Middle, or Kennedy Middle School for our 4K through 8th grade students featured an array of enrichment courses including animal adventures, book clubs, games galore, outdoor games, and food is fun. In total, 27 courses ran for our elementary students. The biggest change that we made to the summer school programming this year, and it really was the only change of note, was that in preparing for the future requirement that we have under Act 20 that we offer intensive reading supports for our students who are still on reading plans, we started building our literacy boosters program to increase its intensity, and in addition to that, we made sure that each one of our sections was supported by a certified reading specialist. So we have multiples of reading specialists who are employed in the district currently, and we were able to support each one of our literacy boosters sections. So we offer at K1, 2, 3, and 4, 5 as three separate sections with a certified reading specialist. And in addition to that, we dropped the class sizes for those so that we could increase the intensity of the support that those students received. In the report, and this is the first time that I've broken out the participants for literacy, and I would continue to do this going forward, for literacy boosters, K1, we had 69 students who participated in that section. In grades 2 through 3, we had 33 participants, and in grades 4, 5, we had 22 participants. I'm guessing that we saw that increase in enrollment for our K1 and 2, 3 group, because those would be the students who had received notification about potentially being on a reading plan. Not all of those students who participated this year were on reading plans. In the future, that's probably going to be one of the requirements, that this is not going to be one of the classes that we offer to any student, but we would prioritize students who are on reading plans for these sections. But this year was that any student who wanted to participate in literacy boosters was able to do that. Going forward, we're probably going to look at options for students who are both on reading plans for lip boosters, and then students who want the enrichment version of literacy. In grades 9 through 12, this is where we saw a little bit of a decrease in enrollment. From 2024, we had 282 students, which was significantly up from the two prior years, and this year we fell down a little bit to 240 students. At the high school level, the vast majority of our programming is in credit recovery or programs that are associated with our music program. So we offer Credit Recovery Camp Acapella, Porcupine Mountain Backpacking, and English 910, as well as the Wall of Sound. And then the last piece of this budget, or the summary for summer school is the budget summary. So in there you can see comparables from the last four years in terms of how we've allocated funds for summer school. The, again, the biggest difference between this year, 2025, and last year was you see there's a little bit of an uptick in terms of our instructor salary. That almost could be represented if you look at where we've allocated extra funds, was due to the reduction in class size for those literacy boosters classes. So there were three extra instructors that we allocated for those sections to make sure that they were supported adequately, and that represents the difference in salary that, between the '24 and '25 school year, our summer school sessions. And then if you look at claimed instructional minutes from '24 and '25, they're very similar. How we report that to the state, it yields an FTE, so for both 2024 and 2025, we claimed 51 FTE for our summer school program.
Any questions? I believe it's report-only?
That's a report-only.
Well, thank you for continuing to enrich the summer school program and push it beyond its initial scope. So just add the robust activities and support that some of our students need, I think, is crucial, as well as obviously a bunch of the entertaining elements that come along with summer school. So thank you and your team that do it, and the staff that man it throughout the summer. Not all teachers are off in the summer, right?
And I would add that we are very fortunate for our staff. Every instructor but one is a Germantown teacher, and the one class that we replaced was a late add, so at the start of the session, every single teacher that we had for summer school was a Germantown employee, which is amazing.
That's fantastic, thank you. C, no other, I guess we can move on to 11. Closed session, give me a moment, we have a few things to read here. A, a motion entered a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 1, 19.85, Sub-1, Sub-G, to confer with the board legal counsel who is retaining oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the board with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, a illegal matter. And two, 19.85, Sub-1, Sub-F, considering financial, medical, or social or personal histories, or disciplinary data of specific person, primarily considering specific personnel problems, or the investigation or charges against a specific person, except where paragraph B applies, which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations, a discussion of employee discipline, b, discussion of complaint against district employee. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Pollak with the motion, Mr. Barney with the second. Roll call.
Ewer.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Barney is a yes. Loth?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Higginbotham?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
While they're present, we will be reconvening and to open as needed from this closed session. If you're not able to, drive home, stay, drive home, stay. Yeah, we're good to go? Okay. I will reconvene the Board of Education meeting back into open at 11:20 PM, and I will entertain a motion regarding closed session, item A, Sub-1, Sub-A, illegal matter.
I'd like to make, I move that the Germantown School District Board disallow the claims submitted by Olivia and Matthew Braz, received September 19th, 2025, pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 893.801G, and that notice of disallowance be provided to the claimants in accordance with the requirements of the statute.
Second.
Mr. Pollak with the motion, Mr. Higginbotham with the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. I'll entertain a motion regarding closed session, A, Sub-2, Sub-B, complaint against district employee.
Motion to authorize the board president to issue a determination of agenda, item 112B. As discussed in closed session, the determination shall be issued to the complainant and respondent in accordance with board policy.
Second. Mr. Barney with the motion, Mr. Boyer with the second. Any discussion?
Pollak with the second.
I'm sorry, Pollak with the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. I will entertain one more motion.
Will we adjourn?
Second.
Mr. Barney with the motion, Mr. Higginbotham with the second.